Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 14th, 2009. We do have a quorum with all but one member of council present. And, by the way, tonight is the first night in a long time. We did it for awhile, but we are now streaming on the web. All of our meetings will be there. Anyone that would wish to check out City Council if you don't happen to be home but want to watch it, go to the city homepage and in the upper left-hand corner you will see how to get to be able to watch our programs. Also available will be all of our former programs, so. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 109, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 25 Flood Damage Prevention. Member Paul?
I just wanted to point out that this is changing the ordinance from last week. That's why it's a second reading this week, to change from the substantial definition so that there is a five-year limit on substantial alterations for housing. And you have to, when the floodplain regulations click into effect, in that way it's not a lifetime coverage. So this way it will be easier for the floodplain administrator and for also people who want to buy houses and update them, change them.
Further comments? Now on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 11009, an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for structural repairs at the Columbus Road Fire Station. Member Bain?
Mr. President, at this time I move to suspend the rules on 11009. The reason for this suspension, as you can see, is a real and present emergency, a necessary repair that needs to be made as quickly as possible.
Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 11009.
Second.
Okay, and now at this point I would like the service director, Safety Service Director, to report what the outcome of the tests have been and what, why we're doing this.
We had MS consultants back in who hired CTI out of Columbus to do testing on the structural facility of the fire department headquarters. They're coming back with a recommendation to install carbon fiber strips and do a rework at the facade beam around the roof, also allowing for some third-party inspection. In addition to that, we've also have some concrete failing, spalling as it were, that needs to be repaired, so we're adding that in for the total of $50,000. I do not know if it will, the first run-through from there have a full report to us later this week, looks like their work is around $40,000. We can have that, and then allowing a little bit of cushion there to do the concrete work at the same time. I guess I'm advising at this time, we're hopeful that it'll fall under the 50, but if something occurs, we may be back.
Although if the cushion doesn't work, we can always repad it, I guess. So we have the money to cover it at this point in time, and it seems pretty necessary. If Sherry had been here, she would have had this lovely obligation.
Further discussion or questions for the Service Safety Director?
Yes.
Yes?
In this work, the inspectors came back and do they think this is, for this moment, the final stuff that we need to do?
This carbon fiber technology that they'll use, they feel very confident in that. Now, is there going to be ongoing maintenance to the old structure? There will be, and there will have to be, but they do believe that this will indeed bring it up to safe standards.
Other comments? Yes, Member Butler?
Just a curiosity. You may have mentioned it, and I apologize if you already did. Is there an estimated time of how long the work would take?
I do not have that. They expect to have the report within two to three days, that will actually even, will have plans and design and be able to then just go to a contractor and get it scheduled.
I'm guessing that the fire station will be operational during this procedure as well?
It will have to be.
Yeah.
Are there other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 11009 has been adopted. Ordinance 11109, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary for construction of the Curtis Mulligan Street Water System Improvements, Project Number 249, and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Bain?
What happens when you're in town and no one else is. Okay, at this point I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 11109.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is, we've talked about the stimulus money in the past, and now we are going to go out and advertise and accept bids, and the time is now. We can't, we don't have time for the three readings. We have talked about it repeatedly. If there's someone out there that really wants to question whether we should do it right now, you know, step forward, but I can't see a reason not to go forward.
Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 111?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
I move adoption of 11109.
Second.
11109 is the bidding phase of something we've talked about before, $800,000 worth of stimulus money, yay, to take care of a problem that has been a considerable problem for Southsiders. And the problem will be solved as this is bid and constructed, and my understanding is that we will be finished with this, except for the paving, by the end of the year. At least that's what the promise is. So it's going to be rapid order here on this. And so this is the bidding phase of the process. There'll be a couple others following this.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 111?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11209, an ordinance amending ordinance 5409, authorizing design engineering of the Curtis Street Water System Improvements, project again 249. Member Bain?
Okay, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules on 11209.
Second.
11209, as you can see, is an amendment to an ordinance of 5409 with respect to increasing the design engineering by $10,000. And so that's what's happening. We have the money to cover it. It's to take care of the design part of that process.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 11109.
Second.
And I already said it under suspension.
I got out of cycle, I'm sorry.
What'd you say?
I said, I think I got out of cycle, I apologize. I missed a month and it takes me awhile to get back.
Okay, alright.
You're up to adopting, I'm sorry.
Move adoption, 11209.
And I think we had a second? Yes.
Okay, and as we can see, we've increased the amount of cost in this particular project, of which it's roughly 50/50 outright grant and a little bit more on a no-cost loan. And so that's what's happening here.
Other comments? Members Sands?
Nothing.
Oh, just mumbled.
Yeah, just mumbled.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 112?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Onto a one-reading resolution. Resolution 0709, a resolution supporting the tentative award of a contract for construction of the Curtis Mulligan Street Water System Improvement Project Number 249. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 0709.
Second.
And this is an essential part of our process of claiming the money that has been awarded to us from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, that is going to be coming out of the EPA and OWDA. And we will have some more ordinances on this. We'll be appropriating the money. It will, we'll have quite a thick band of paper once we're through.
Look, yeah, Mayor Wile?
Just a footnote on this. First of all, I'd like to thank Debbie Walker for, going historically back to how we dealt with these type of loans and agreements. One of the things about this recovery act is that they will not award without, they will not give us the money without an award, so that's why the contingency portion of this is in here. It's a chicken and egg situation here. So the resolution is kind of like saying, yes, we're going to put the thing out and we'd like to make sure we get the money. And again, it's a timing issue more than anything else, because as you know with the stimulus package, they want this stuff to move as quickly as possible.
It's just unusual for us to see a resolution in addition to the ordinances, I would think.
Wednesday is what I heard from Andy, it's going to be taken care of, right?
Yes, and, and as I say, the Clerk of Council went back to AD6 to find various wording that fits a bill, actually. We've done this before, but, yeah, except for her signature, I don't recognize the other signatures on it. Sorry.
Was that damage?
Yes, our clerk does go back, doesn't he? Further discussion on resolution 07? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 0709 has been adopted. The next item on our agenda, and then after, as an executive session, then City Council is going to be meeting in a series of committee meetings. I think it'd probably be easier for us to meet in executive session in our chambers down the hallway. The reason for the executive session is to discuss some collective bargaining that's before the city right now. To go into executive session takes a motion, a second. Who all do we want to be in executive session? The mayor, the Service Safety Director?
The auditor.
The auditor? Anyone else?
Any.
And the law director?
And the law director.
My tribe.
I move that we move into executive committee, with those who have been mentioned, the auditor, Service Safety Director, mayor, and the law director along with council.
Do we have a second?
Second. Aye.
Member Paul?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, we will be moving into executive session as soon as this is over. We will be back for a city, or a series of committee meetings, I have been told. It shouldn't take too awfully long, we'll see. Welcome back to Athens City Council. The City Council has now come out of its executive session and will start our series of committee meetings. The first one tonight is the Environment Committee. That's Chair, Alu Gosnig, Member Gosnig.
Thank you. We have a few things I will try to get through relatively quickly here. The first one will probably take the most amount of time. The mayor's office, this is not on the agenda, I'm going to rearrange it a little bit and add something to the beginning. This is an effort to increase the energy efficiency of city buildings and save money from the, right off the bat. So the mechanism the state of Ohio allows cities to engage in, and the mayor's office has been working on this for some time now, so I'll take it, transfer it to the mayor here.
I'll transfer it to Paula. Nothing like delegation, I'm getting good at this.
Ron Lucas, the Assistant Service Safety Director, has been working most closely with Perfection Group on this. House Bill 420 is a tool that allows communities to fund improvements to public buildings regarding energy efficiency, and they'll speak to that tonight. So, the city has authorized the Perfection Group to continue their work. They've developed a request for proposals for the city to advertise out to interested parties, and we, of course, haven't gone any further until council has gotten, given us authorization. And they're going to hear it tonight to give us about a 10-minute presentation of the items that they've been working on. It should clear up a number of questions that council may have.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. How are you all tonight?
Thanks.
I'm Rick Anderson, and Al Lindemann's sitting over here in the chair. We'll buzz through this as quickly, there's a spare floor as well, he's not here too. We'll buzz through this as quickly as we can. I have a radio face and not a television face, so that'll help me really get through this. Thank you again very much for having us. Paula, the mayor, Ron, and George. Yes, thank you for pronouncing that. I have a hard time with, have it very hard.
Sorry to interrupt. Could I ask that you either take your seat where the microphone is, or you can stand here at the podium if your microphone's out there? Absolutely, no, that's great. So they can hear you at home. No, that's great.
These are the mics.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Drum rolls on the table don't work.
No, that's, that's fine.
Just put your, you know, put gun top over.
They've been very helpful in helping us. We've been working with the city for, gosh, it's probably almost been a year, and what we've been doing is, if you'll take this part of the packet out of the right-hand part of your packet, and I apologize, this should say up on top, "House Bill 420 Validation Report" instead of "House Bill 295." So cross that off, I'm sorry, Secretary made a little boo-boo here, so I apologize. But if you go down, what we'll do tonight, real quickly, is the meeting agenda, the slide at the bottom, introduction to Perfection Group, we'll review House Bill 420, we'll review the validation report that we've put together for the city, which we've already done for the, for Paula and the mayor. We'll discuss the city of Athens facility needs, and then we'll determine the next step. If you go to the next page, a little bit about who we are, myself and Al, we've been in the business over 20 years, not two rookies who just showed up straight out of college. We've been in the industry over 20 years, so we've been, we've been doing this for quite awhile. A little bit about who Perfection is. Perfection is a facility services energy conservation company based out of Cincinnati, Ohio. We have eight locations in five states, about a $35 million to $40 million company, so again, not, not two guys working out of their garage. We've been, been doing, in the business since 1951, and a very established business, and again, eight locations in five states, based in Cincinnati, Cincinnati, Dayton, Columbus, Louisville, Lexington, Indianapolis, Charleston, West Virginia, and Knoxville, Tennessee. If you go to the next page, our group's capabilities, we have quite a few capabilities, again, out of our company. We have a design-build-mechanical company, and, again, all these are based in Cincinnati. If you're going to go build a new building, we have electrical design, build, installation capabilities. Our HVAC maintenance and services, part of our business.
Can you fix that?
Sure, no, that's okay. Our HVAC maintenance and services capabilities, we have over 2,000 customers in our, in our eight offices, so again, quite a few vans out driving around doing maintenance, maintenance work in our, in our companies. Our professional engineering, you see the lead green building engineering group, and our design team for the Kentucky Agricultural, Al's going to talk about that a little bit further down our presentation. Building automation controls, if you have any kind of controls in your buildings, whether they're Honeywell, Johnson, Siemens, anything like that, we have individuals in our company that can take care of those controls. And any energy systems and utility analysis, that again is done out of our Cincinnati location, but it can actually be done out of any of our other offices as well. So again, all those capabilities we have under one umbrella out of our company. The next slide, Al's going to review the House Bill 420 funding vehicle.
Big part of what we wanted to talk about today is just make sure you understand what House Bill 420 is all about. State of Ohio, back in the mid-1980s, enacted a House Bill 264, and it allowed state public school districts to fund energy conservation work. And for 10 years, there were probably 100 or more House Bill 264 projects done throughout the state of Ohio. They liked it so much that they enacted some legislation for public, other public entities back in the mid-'90s. House Bill 300 was for counties, cities, townships. House Bill 7 was for public universities. For some reason, the public universities picked on it a little bit faster than counties and townships have, to the point that really there weren't a whole lot of House Bill 300 projects done over a 10-year period. For whatever reason, last year, people started, the interest in energy conservation, obviously with the growth or the rise in utility costs, energy conservation became a big topic again. And the state of Ohio actually modified what was House Bill 300 to House Bill 295, it was a year ago this summer, for counties, counties and townships. The cities, for whatever reason, didn't like the language of House Bill 295, so in January this year, they came out with House Bill 420, that actually creates language very specific to cities, that allows you to do a broader range of things than what House Bill 300 allowed you to do. It also expanded the term from 10 years to potentially 30 years. House Bill 420 really has two things. First off, it allows you to finance energy conservation work, okay? So you can go out and get a loan, flow funds, whichever mechanism that you choose to actually get your funding from. The only caveat is that to borrow the money, the project has to pay for itself in the energy savings and operational savings that it generates. So again, potentially you could do a project over 30 years, as long as it pays for itself over 30 years. Now, the reality is, nobody's doing any projects for 30 years. Right now with the banking industry the way it is, the longest term that we're binding is 15. Some people are doing 10, a lot are looking at 15. So the key is, a project that will fund itself over that 15-year period. The nice thing about the funding is it doesn't apply to your legal allowable indebtedness. It really is a set aside loan, so you're not restricted to whatever your bonding capacity is at a certain point in time. The second thing about the legislation is it simplifies the process to go do energy conservation work. And historically, in a public entity, you would have to hire an engineer, have them put together a bid specification, and then have companies bid to that bid specification, whether it was a good bid, or a good specification, or a bad specification. The way House Bill 420 is, it allows you to invite, basically you advertise twice, once a week for two weeks, then 10 days after the second ad, you can mail out RFPs. And the RFP is nothing more than an invitation for companies like Perfection to come to your city, analyze your buildings, and give you creative solutions on how you could save money in the operation of your buildings. The legislation says that you have to mail out a minimum of three RFPs, but typically, as you go out in the city of your size, if you, once you advertise, you'll get a number of people to the table to show interest in what you're doing. So again, the two keys, allows you to fund it, and it creates a simple system that allows you to actually do the process and come up with creative solutions on how to make your buildings run more efficient. Any questions about those two items?
You have a copy of House Bill 420 in your packet as well. It was about a 50 or 60-page House Bill, that really you're concerned with like three pages in that packet, so.
Pages 38 through 41 address the energy conservation legislation. Yep. When we came to the city, it was back in January this year, we met with Paula and Paula and Ron, and basically what Perfection tries to do is offer a process that allows us to help you identify if even going to the House Bill process makes sense or not. So we do what we call a validation process, and the validation process is two things. We do an energy audit of your buildings, and basically allows us to identify the potential savings through your buildings. And again, it's a very simple thing. We collect your utility bills for two years. We benchmark your buildings to buildings like yours using the Energy Star website database that's available on the internet. Again, Energy Star, if you're familiar, it's who rates your washers and dryers, but they also have a huge amount of energy data collected from thousands and thousands of buildings all over the country. So we did that, and identified that there are definitely savings opportunities within your buildings. The second step was then to actually go through with one of our engineers, Rick and I, and one of our engineers walked through 20 of your buildings, and identified and eyeballed a grocery list of energy conservation measures for virtually every building. So what we're going to do here shortly is give you a sampling of some of the things that we looked at, okay? After today, kind of where you're at is at the crossroads to say, based on the information we pulled together for the city, is it worthwhile for you to go forward and look at doing the House Bill process? And the House Bill process, as you can see, is pretty straightforward. Once you decide to move forward, you would pass a resolution saying you're going to utilize House Bill 420. Second, you need to do the legal notices, once a week for two weeks. Then 10 days after the second ad, you're able to mail out a minimum of three RFPs. From there, typically there's a preview meeting that allows the contractors that are interested to come in and go through a Q&amp;A session, and probably with George, walk through a few of your buildings to get a feel for what your buildings look like. That begins the engineering process, which takes roughly two months, okay? And then during the engineering process, the companies will come back on their own, go through the buildings, do all the detail work to figure out their proposals. So ultimately, at the end of that two-month period, you will get proposals from all those companies that are interested in responding. And those proposals will include the cost of every conservation measure that they want to suggest, the potential energy savings for every energy conservation measure that they suggest, the average life expectancies of those same measures. Ultimately, it gives you then a big bundle of being able to decide what types of things you would like to do in what buildings, so that ultimately you can create a bundle of energy conservation measures that gives you the biggest bang for your buck in the buildings that are critical to you in your operation. Does that make sense? Once those proposals are delivered, you then go through a period of evaluating those proposals. You would choose basically the company that you want to do business with, and through that evaluation process, you would go through and identify the company that you feel will give you, again, the biggest bang for your buck, the project that will give you the most return for the money spent. Once you choose that vendor, you then go through a negotiation process to actually determine what the final contract will look like, and the terms and conditions that go with that, that final agreement. So that's the basic process that you go through once you go into the House Bill. Any questions on that?
I would point out that we have been approached by other companies at the same time, so there's not a dearth of companies that look at this. It is an RFP process, and we have a range of energy savings, so we could do short-term as well as long-term. Everything from, as you say, 30 years, photovoltaics, up to some short-term things. I think Chevron looked at some of our water treatment plant, as well as our wastewater treatment plant at one time, with the same eye on it.
We looked at, we looked at everything. If you go to the next, next.
Real quick, just to give you a quick summary of what we found through our utility audit. We found, we did a study on about 10 of your 20 buildings when we did our original utility analysis, and out of that, we found buildings that range in cost per square foot for utilities from a dollar to about $14, so over $14. And again, it's hard to make that measurement because some buildings have different occupancies, different operating schedules, but still, $14 per square foot, that's a lot of money, okay? We also, to do our benchmark, it's hard to do cost per square foot analysis because cost of utilities around the country varies a lot. So what we did is identify BTUs per square foot, and a BTU per square foot here is the same as a BTU per square foot in Washington DC, and Seattle, Washington. It's a good comparison, so we're able to make a much better verification on how your consumption is. What we identified through our study is that easily, you should be able to save over $100,000 a year in utilities in your buildings, and that's just in the 10 that we looked at, okay? In looking at the other 20, there are savings opportunities in virtually every building that we are in. So to put that into perspective, $100,000 a year over 15 years, obviously a million five in potential savings over 15 years, or that's the kind of project that you could potentially fund, including the cost of money over a 15-year period. Allows for a lot of work to be done, okay? Great potential for savings. Because of those numbers, that's when the city management decided, yeah, let's go do the validation study, let's go through and do the walk-through of the buildings, which is kind of what took us into the next step. And basically, when we walk into a building, there are seven different categories of energy conservation measures that we look at. They range from lighting, okay, and that is the first thing we always look at, but lighting is more than just the lights you see in a room like this. That's part of it, you know, upgrading from old technology fluorescent fixtures to newer technology fluorescent fixtures is a big key. Motion sensors in a building where people come and go out of offices, so the lights will automatically turn off is a big thing that we look at. We look at exterior lighting on the outside of a building. We also look at things like traffic lights, changing the incandescent bulbs in a traffic light to LED technology. Or streetlights, or parking lots, or parking garages. That's a broad spectrum of things that we would look at from a lighting standpoint to help you make your buildings run more efficiently. And without a doubt, lighting is probably a number one, the biggest thing that your city needs to do throughout the city buildings. The second piece we look at is retrocommissioning. Retrocommission allows us to take a look at your existing systems and find ways to make what you have today work more efficiently. We're not just about replacing systems. If we can make what you have run better, we'll do that, and save the money, and again, get a better return for your investment. But when needed, opportunity to upgrade building automation systems is important, looking to automate the process so that systems don't run when the building's not occupied, or run as efficiently as possible when they are occupied. And that goes for heating and air conditioning systems, it goes for office equipment, it goes for vending machines. Why have things run when there's nobody in the building? Or at least lights and those types of things. So we'll cycle lights off in a vending machine, might turn off printers or copiers that, again, not being used at night when nobody's at their workstation. Mechanical electrical retrofits, that's another very big one. That's actually where you can't make the system run more efficiently, but there's newer technologies, then looking to replace older systems is a key. Now that's like replacing an old chiller, or an old boiler, or an old rooftop package unit. It could mean doing major upgrades to your water treatment plant, your sewage treatment plant, your water distribution plant, and without a doubt, your water plants themselves are the biggest energy consumers of any of the buildings that you have, and you probably know that, but there's major energy savings opportunities typically in those types of facilities. On top of that, water conservation is a big thing, in restrooms, cooling towers, lawn sprinkling systems, there's a multitude of things that can be done to try and minimize wastewater and use that more efficiently. We also look at building envelope, walls, insulation, windows, roofing, anything of that nature that can be done to make your building tighter. Weather stripping, those types of things are important things, again, to minimize how much air or conditioned air you might lose out of your building. And then the last one is renewable. Again, we know that you've looked at solar throughout your city, in fact, you have two In fact, you have two very good solar companies located here in Athens, between Third Sun and Dovetail. We know all those guys and then work closely with them. But wind may or may not have a good application here, solar definitely does, biofuels. We're looking at different applications in wastewater treatment plants, the use of taking the sludge from the plant and using it to fire a biofuel boiler, and using that to power the wastewater treatment plant. Don't know if it'll work here, but that's one of the technologies that we would look at. So it's being done in other cities just like yours around the country, so. The key is to look at all these opportunities and find out which gives you the biggest bang for the buck. And the key to what we try and do with these House Bill projects is take projects like lighting retrofits and help it fund things like solar panels that don't have a particular good payback on their own. So you bundle quicker payback items with longer payback items to get you the really the biggest or the best return on your investment for the money that you're investing in your buildings. So, and our job is to help you find ways to fund not just the quick payback, but the long payback, or even more importantly, maybe some of the critical projects that need to get done, but by themselves probably have trouble getting funded from a capital standpoint. And again, the key is to help you get those things done and build it into a project like this, so. Questions about the energy conservation measure?
Just briefly, you mentioned water conservation. I didn't hear you mention anything about gray water, or is there any retrofitting or work there with gray water?
Absolutely can. Again, depends on what we need to do with any of the... That is one of the potential applications we could look at, so.
Yeah, I'll buzz through these last couple. Again, these, the slide down the bottom, these were all the buildings that we looked through, pretty much every building that you have in the city. So we pretty much took a look at every building. If you go to the next page, these are two examples of actual ECMs, with energy conservation measures that we found in both city building, community center. Again, those were two, those were examples of some of the ECMs that Al went through, okay? And two of the buildings. And then to go to the next page, a validation report summary. You know, obviously, there's, as Al was talking about before, there's some definite opportunities to reduce energy in your building. There's a huge opportunity, and I think it's, you know, a million plus, as you can tell from the, from the report. Any questions? Thoughts?
If I could just ask one, before you go, Kent.
Sure, go ahead.
So that's savings, that's a net savings after we pay for the improvements, you know, if we were to do this, we would float a bond or get a loan?
Probably. Probably the best from a financing perspective, these tax-free municipal leases, which you've probably heard of, I don't know if you're using those, those are pretty common, like buying vehicles and those type of things. Those seem to be the best way to kind of pay for this stuff, but yes.
The savings actually is not net. The savings is what would fund the total project. We haven't gotten to a point to be able to tell you what the net savings would be yet.
Right.
I guess the question is, would this increase, when we're making our payments on this each year, on these improvements, would we, would it hurt our bottom line, or would we at least level out in terms of the cost to us, the cost versus savings?
The financial scenarios we would put together would all be, or would be put together before you sign the agreement. Typically, it's even billing over a period of years. The savings really, again, our intent is to create a package that would give you a positive cash flow. So ultimately, you could have money falling back into your general fund that would allow you to use for other applications. Some people spend all their money and put it back into the building, some people drive positive cash flow. It really ultimately is your decision when you put that final package together.
Excellent. And so, questions from council? Kent, you want to go first?
Thank you. Alan and Rick, thank you for your presentation. You'd mentioned that the study that you did, and correct me if I'm wrong, was 10 buildings, is that correct, while you were here?
We did, we did all your buildings. The initial, the initial walkthrough that we did to just do the utility analysis was just on a, on a few buildings.
Okay.
But then we actually did the walkthrough for the validation report on all of your buildings.
Okay. And that's why I was curious about the savings that Member Gosney was referring to. I didn't know if that was inclusive of all the buildings, or your estimate of what would...
That budget was for the buildings that we did the initial utility audit, so it would be for the first 10 buildings. It didn't include the other 10.
So there's a potential for even more savings than a million dollars?
Absolutely.
If the other buildings were...
Included.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions or comments from council members?
Two questions. Of course, therefore, I assume that you would be one of the people that we would be asking for an RFP.
We would hope so.
Okay. And secondly, House Bill 490 then...
420.
420.
Yep.
Doesn't actually offer us the financing, it just enables us to go or look for the financing somewhere else.
That is correct.
And someone like you could help us find that. We absolutely can. That would be part of the package.
You can use a local bank, you can, we can direct it in the, we have some brokers that do this, tax-free municipal leases. Some of your local banks still might offer that, a lot of them used to offer that, but when the banking crisis happened, a lot of them stopped offering that, so, but we can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And really, what you're looking at here is somewhat a mechanism to do something, city infrastructure for the buildings that we have to improve them in the long run. And this is one way to actually, to float a loan without having incurred more debt. Again, it's new to me, but I've been talking to them for quite some time, and I know, as I say, Ron's been, and Nick Carr previously were dealing with the wastewater treatment plant with Chevron on that. I noticed that I, probably, four months don't go by before, without somebody else approaching me at this. We just went with them because they were, you know, they weren't the first ones in the door. But again, it still has to go as an RFP. We can pick and choose how much indebtedness we want, which buildings we want to substitute. The thing to do is we look at the real energy drains and go from there, and the ones that need more of an upgrade sooner than later. There's, there's a lot of choices here. Again, they talk about the case study for Washington County, and I know that Bell Priest done an energy upgrade of their facilities, not through them, but another corporation. And there are other cities doing this as well. So the next thing to do would be to start looking out there and see what...
We just came from the city of Logan before we came down here, and they got an RFP that's going out on the street, so. People going all over the place.
Sure.
Let's see, one comment and then two questions.
Sure.
I recently, in fact, in the last couple of months, put in geothermal at my home. 2,500 feet of pipe in my front yard, six feet down to take advantage of. And I went through a presentation that, you know, really talked to me about how much money I would be saving on it. Now, I got my first month that I can compare this year with last year, and saw that my electric bill went from $210 last year to $240 this year for the month of July. So I'm having trouble seeing the savings. Now, I will admit that the house was much better air-conditioned than it ever had been before, and we were using a very, very old system. And the same question that I ask of the last folks here that were kind of making a proposal, A, how do you guys get paid? And B, if the savings aren't there, do we have any guarantee?
Typically, we work on a fixed-price process. We would give you a price to do the work, you choose what pieces you want to do, we negotiate the final price, and we get paid for that after we, as we do our work. From a guarantee standpoint, there absolutely can be a guarantee, and if we don't meet some nugget, there could be a check that changes hands if that goes to that point.
So if the savings isn't there, your organization can make up the difference?
Absolutely.
If that's what you pick to do. Washington County, for instance, we're 120-something percent of our savings projections to those folks, and you can talk to them if you want to. We're very conservative with our, with our energy projections, so, yeah.
The key in doing a project like this is doing a project that you know will deliver, and that's the kind of company that Perfection is. We don't suggest things that are far out there. We'll give you ideas that we know will deliver. Through the whole RFP process, you get to build a level of comfort, and if you don't get that comfort, don't do that part of the project.
And up to this point, and they can tell you how much time we've spent with them, there's been zero money spent, you know, zero out-of-pocket for the city of Athens, so.
The only cost is having George walk around with him. That's about it.
George needs something to do.
No, don't say that. He's got lots to do.
There are a lot of opportunities. Do we still have the old boiler in this building that we had for many, many years, which I've hated for a long, long time? And when you say the water treatment plant, boy, when you walk around that facility and look at how old some of the things are, I'm sure...
The other thing, AEP's offering a lighting rebate right now, till the end of the year at least, and you guys have lights, older lighting systems all over your city that need to take advantage of that lighting rebate, like, right now, so, if all is available.
Good question. Thanks for asking that. Do you have anything else to add, Mayor?
No, the next steps would be, of course, authorization to start doing the process if you want to go that way.
And so I guess, one last question I have is, assuming that a council were to authorize entering into some sort of contract, at what point would we have, would we get a look at it and have the next step of approval?
We'd provide you with a resolution, and it's pretty, pretty easy. We just, we could send you a copy of a resolution that you can use, while you guys got to do the passing. And then, we've also given them a copy of the advertisement that goes out in the paper, we've given them copies of RFPs, so.
I think Alahu is asking, you know, when, you know, what, does he just set this free and it never comes back to the council?
Right, right.
No. Essentially, you'd have to authorize actually trying to get a loan. We could actually put together, if need be, I assume that we'll be putting together a package of people to, you know, committee together within the administration, so we'd keep informed of what kind of mix and match we'd end up with, because we need to, it's going to take more than, yes, you know, it's going to take everybody in every department to evaluate this, depending on how it's going to work.
I assume somebody from council will be on the committee, so.
I hope so.
We could arrange that. Well, thank you very much for coming and presenting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for your time.
Mayor, thank you for bringing this forward. I hope that we can afford with this. If anyone has any questions or feedback, please get it to me as soon as possible. When would you like us to move on this, if we do, Mayor?
Sooner than later, I think. Is that one in the package here?
Actually, there is a tentative timeline on the very last page of the slide.
Last page, yes.
Was something we supposed to go and follow a couple of weeks ago, is a potential timeline.
Which I'd say is probably already falling behind, just so you know.
This is going through three readings of council about the authorization process.
Okay.
All right.
So next Monday.
Is there any opposition from council to bringing a proposal forward for the mayor to take the next step on this?
Again, we can always reject it if we feel that, you know, it's not going where we want to go. It's a contract, we just determined, but I think it's a good idea.
I think, I personally think that we should go forward. I think that this is great, because this definitely provides accountability for how we use our, our money for utilities, and it makes so much sense for city council and city government to go through with this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I will move on to the next item on my agenda, which is, on your agenda, is the first item, which is a city energy plan, very much related to this work. As part of the Cool Cities process, which the city initiated a couple of years ago, we should, at least to keep things moving, come up with a comprehensive energy plan for the city that looks at all the energy we're using for city, for the city buildings, city vehicles, and develops a plan to reduce the amount of energy we're using, which this would obviously be a big part of that, and also to reduce our carbon footprint in the long run. So it's something that, we don't need to have much of a discussion on here at all. I'm just hoping to start a committee, mostly run by residents and citizens, with city council oversight, and hopefully, the mayor's office as well, to start moving on that, to draft a plan for the city that could come before council for approval as the official energy plan for the city. So it's, it's something to keep our Cool Cities work moving forward. Mayor?
Part of the thing that the planner Paul Oak pointed out is, many times when we're chasing grants, one of the things we would, would be nice to have is a whole cloth energy plan. And I guess it dovetails with what's going on with the saving of buildings, but this is in the city itself. Green fleets is part of it, you know, the LED traffic lights, part of it. The question is, how do we start, you know, putting it all in one place? So there's ongoing discussions with Ron Lucas and, as I say, Paul Oak and Alahu.
And the Sierra Club is interested in helping to run and chair that committee to make sure that things are moving with it, so. If there's any questions or anything.
I guess the only thing I'd ask, why would this not just be the environment committee?
I'd like to see it as a separate committee that, you know, it's going to be composed of, hopefully, we can get business folks, residents, people that are environmentalists who are involved in those organizations, as, as a, I don't know if it would be ad hoc exactly, it might, maybe ongoing, maybe as a subcommittee to work on the Cool Cities aspect of it. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. I've just never seen, you know, committees, setting up committees. Usually, those kind of things are done within the committee, but, you know, I don't agree with the objection to it.
Well, we can, I'd be happy to talk with you, and I'm new to committees in some ways, so maybe the actual structure, we can work it out. But the work will be going on, absolutely. Did you have something, Mayor?
You realize, we have been looking at, we've been having weekly meetings, so Ron, Paul, Oak, myself, Alahu. I realize you had a intern last, earlier this year, so we've been having ongoing meetings. Not really a formal committee, but there's a dialogue just to keep the pace in terms of what we want to do with the photovoltaics. So I imagine what you're hearing from some other citizens, they'd like to be involved in the energy conservation side, rather than the energy generation side. I've been approached by, you know, you look at, say, what's going on with the university in terms of their energy savings, the eco-house system that the Sustainability Group of council put together. The meeting with the President McDavis earlier today, he brought up the fact that their Sustainability Council, if they find some nuggets of useful information that they want to coordinate with us as well. So these things have been evolving slowly, there's no real cohesion, it's just a general vision of how to, how to make it better. So I know what Alahu's trying to say about putting a committee together. It's not really something coming out of council, I don't think, but more as, almost grassroots in some level.
So perhaps the best thing would be for Mayor, for you to convene the committee and have...
Delegating to me, okay, I'll have to write my...
Convene it, if, if you're interested in that.
Okay.
Yes, Chris.
This is a perfect opportunity to remind people of next, the town hall meeting next Tuesday, which is on energy at the community center.
Okay, yes, that's September 22nd.
Yes.
6:30.
6:30 to 9:00 at the community center.
Analyst about that.
Thank you.
It's about energy.
I have one last item on the agenda, and this is some potential stimulus money that we can take advantage of for renewable energy. The state received tens of millions of dollars for energy purposes, versing 14 million for solar and wind projects. The RFP just came out very recently, I think we saw it a week and a half ago, for these projects, for these grant applications. And the deadline is coming up very quickly, September 25th is the deadline for submission, so we'll have one regular assessment of council before then. The way they, they wrote this is really attractive to something called a power purchase agreement, which, it's, it's a complicated process, but quite simply, it's, a third party owns, for instance, if we did solar, which is what we're looking at, a third party owns the installation, they own the solar, they provide all the upfront money, and they do it from an investment or business standpoint, so they're eligible for the credits, the tax credits and such that cities are not eligible for. And this grant would, would reduce the cost of those agreements. The city would sign a contract to purchase electricity from the, from them. They own the system, install it on city property, and we basically agree to buy the electricity from them for a given number of years, 15 years, 20 years, as long as the system is guaranteed to be operating at efficient capacity. This is something that I've been talking with, just as of Friday, it's very recent, talking with a local installer about, he's working with a number of cities across the working with a number of cities across the state, and has a third party that wants to set up these, or that is setting up these power purchase agreements. And I've got some information here I'll pass out, that council members can read over. The installer has told me that we haven't seen any of the numbers yet, and hopefully, I'll be getting those the next day or two. The installer, the local installer, has told me that we would save money on our electricity due to this grant, so the grant brings down the cost so much that we can actually, when we sign this purchase agreement, end up saving money on our electricity. And, Mayor, you haven't seen all of this yet, it just came to me yesterday, Friday, and today.
That was from Dovetail, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, I looked at some of it, I didn't have a chance to look at it closely.
And, and what they're, what they're proposing as, or what we're proposing as part of this, or looking into at least, is putting solar over our parking lot at the Community Center. So, they've done this at a number of universities and other places around the state. It would involve Ohio manufacturing of the support for the panels themselves, so that's one thing the state will look at when they're evaluating these grants. I, like I said, it's, it's only been the past few days that this has been coming together. I need to meet with the mayor as soon as possible. Hopefully, we're, we'll be able to set up a conference call Wednesday or Thursday with, with the third party.
Okay, just so you don't get, you have information for the rest of council on this, I see.
I do, and for you.
I don't want, okay, because I don't want you getting too far ahead on this. The grant that we're talking about, which Alahu is talking about, has a placeholder deadline of September 21st, a actual application deadline of September 25th. It has, and just so you go into sticker shock on some of this stuff, it's in increments of quarter million to $1 million awards, and they're asking for a 50% match, which is what the company would be willing to put together, if I understand it correctly. And that's the power purchasing organization or company. This is a little bit ahead of what I would, I like the concept, I'm not sure if it's, if it's, I almost think it may be too bold, but at the same time, I want to bring everybody up to speed on the concept at least. And it's for your discussion whenever you choose.
Nancy, please.
Well, I have a solar installation in my house, and I, I have an inverter, so I actually save elect, money on my electric bill, so I don't understand why. I did actually have an offer from somebody in California who wished to buy my solar panels. I don't know why. I mean, I, I think that there are a lot of, it sounded to me like Bernie Madoff a little bit, but, anyway, having said that, I don't understand why an inverter wouldn't be all we'd need. But, more importantly, I guess I don't know about the aesthetics of putting solar panels over the parking lot at the Community Center. I don't, it could be for the farmer's market, a little new, sort of, pagoda type of thing that we've been talking about, but I think it needs a little bit more thought. I mean, I think there are a lot of people that made us tear down a building, for example, where we had a gender-based boat, if you recall, and other things like that. I really, I don't know. How high would they be? What would be the implication in terms of the aesthetics? And I'd certainly want to hear the, from the rec committee on that, advisory committee, the rec advisory committee on this, because my automatic, I mean, why not on the roof of the Community Center where they won't be seen?
I think the difficulty of installing it is there because of curved roof, and actually, some of the discussion was the.
Well, flying buttress. I mean, why can't you just put the same things you're going to put on the parking lot above the, above the Community Center? Why not? I mean, it's possible. Maybe not probable, but possible. I just wonder sometimes about putting that over the parking lot.
I guess, you know, one of the reasons to do the parking lot is it provides shading for the, for the vehicles, and it's an open space without trees, without obstruction.
It'll obscure the, the center, too. I mean, it'll, it'll be ugly, maybe.
I'll see if I can get some.
And it will be shiny, too. I mean, that's the other thing. I wonder about the implication on, on the roads. I mean, just, I mean, they're not totally ugly, but they're nice hidden, because they do their work without being out there, my experience.
And if, if I could mention something about the cost, so, you know, a home installation, you end up paying, funding it, and it usually ends up costing more money in the long run than the normal, the electricity you purchase from AEP. With something like this power purchase agreement, like I said, it, I'm, at least I'm being told, that the cost of electricity to the city would be at or lower than what we're paying for AEP, and it would be a huge demonstration project in the city to show that, show what's possible. It would, it would be visible, and aesthetically, some people may have issues with that. You know, the parking lot is off to the side, for the most part, at the Community Center, at least the biggest part of it. And, and there's the parking lot by the pool, I guess, as well. And I understand, you know, this is, this has just come up very recently. It's the opportunity to bring a huge amount of business to a local, a local company, an opportunity to bring renewable energy to our city, to inspire residents, other cities' businesses. And I apologize that I don't have more details, it's the timing of this coming up.
The 21st of September. As a member of the committee, I mean, the 21st of September is just right around the corner, and, you know, I don't want to be a wet blanket about this, but I just guess I don't know. Does that mean that the vendor is going to pay our half of the cost according, and do we have this in writing from that vendor?
I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm still getting details from.
I mean, if, if not, then how could we possibly?
Well, we absolutely would have things in writing before we would commit anything.
And aren't there other sites that aren't so intrusive on the recreation area? I mean, couldn't you take J.B. Hayes' Hill Force and put it on there? I mean, that would be an improvement over what's there.
That's a great idea.
I know, it's not a great idea. I was just shooting.
The roof for the parking garage.
Sherry, please.
Would it cover the entire Community Center parking lot, or just parts of it?
There's, there's flexibility. You know, the size, the size could be, you know, small, medium, or large. I'll just, you know, what we're interested, I'll pass this around, it shows, shows a mockup from the company that produces the structures. And I guess, in order to, you know, it sounds like this probably isn't going to be something the council will support, which I think is disappointing, and a lot of it's due to the timing. This is really something coming up so quickly, and I understand.
Well, just tell them to give you more time.
I understand those reservations, but the state of Ohio won't change the deadlines for me. I don't know if you have better connections, but.
Oh, I definitely.
Anyway, I'm going to see what.
It basically looks like a carport.
Exactly.
It doesn't look.
Like the airport red parking lot.
Yeah.
So, is, the placeholder application is the 21st? Is, so if we put in a, you know, kind of placeholder, this is kind of what we're thinking of, that doesn't commit us?
Totally not committal. It's a one-page, it's a one-page summary on the 21st, but on the 25th, we would have to have.
The 25th of September.
Oh, wow.
Why do they do, I mean, why bother doing the one?
It's the stimulus, the pressure on the stimulus funding to get it out the door and rolling as quick as possible.
Well, I think, I would like to see more, because I think that this is a really interesting idea, and with, with the idea that we don't have to commit.
I will.
It does look for four days.
It doesn't look, I mean, it looks like a carport.
I will, I will continue to gather information and possibly hold a committee meeting later this week, so we can discuss it in committee one more time, if, if it looks like it's something that's possible, and that other council members would be able to support, then we'll, we'll move forward that way.
But the key point is, you have to get the commitment from Dovetail, in writing, right? I mean, before we go forward.
Right, from them and the third party. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Member Gosney. I want to express, I appreciate your bold interest in this program, and I do also value the mayor's opinion on this as well, since he's at this job full-time and I'm a part-timer. Having said that, too, I also am thankful for Member Bain in acknowledging, in acknowledging the interests or concerns of the advisory board from the rec department, rec advisory board. And I'm curious, too, just in general, why this particular site was picked, when there is a lot of other city opportunities?
One of the biggest reasons is that those, those structures being made in Ohio are something the state's going to look at when they award these grants. So, covering parking lots, and if we had another large, you know, a large parking lot that the city owned, we could do that, but I believe that's our largest one.
West State Ball Field.
Yeah, West State Ball Field. Put them over the community garden.
I mean, these, these structures can be put anywhere.
Flying baseballs landing on solar panels.
I'm not sure that we could put them near baseballs.
Some netting there.
They're little kids.
Anyway, if, if it does look like something's going to happen, I will do what I can to convene a committee meeting, as long as I can get enough notice out to, to the press and the public.
If I may add one other thing, too.
Yes, please.
And I know in, in, in other communities and overseas as well, that there are communities where there's a lot of sunshine, parking lots are covered with some, with similar structures to help protect the cars, longevity, and keep them from being hot, or.
I just, I want to say, I find the idea very intriguing, and I'm glad that you and the administration are out there watching for these things, but I have to join the group that I don't see how we can get enough attention paid by all the groups that need to pay attention to this by the, by the 25th. The rec advisory committee, uptown beautification, I don't know. A lot, a lot of, a lot of people are going to want to weigh in on this, and I, I'm afraid it can't happen by the 25th, for us to make a reasonable choice, a reasonable decision. And, maybe we should pursue it as much as possible, and then be ready for another opportunity to come to a halt.
Okay, well, I appreciate all the comments, and if I can pull off a miracle, I will certainly try. Paul, please.
I guess I'd like to say, we have submitted online, and this was done when Gary Hauser was still acting as intern, for three or four stimulus energy-related projects, for the Community Center, parking garage, and what have you. And I think we need to get copies to council, so you're aware, so that we, you know, miracles, miracles were selected, we want to be able to proceed.
And those are still in?
They're still holding place.
Yeah, states, you don't have to re-submit.
You mean for more than four days? Holding the place for more than four days?
We haven't seen deadlines for those. It was, it was a situation where they wanted one-page, less than one-page summaries of, of interesting projects, and I will get those to people.
Yeah, what you're seeing is you have the, that Recovery Ohio Gov section, you could put a placeholder in, and as the deadlines came up, then you had a chance to actually embellish them or add more detail.
Okay.
And, again, we're talking, we, we put in the concept of revolving loan fund, put that together as well, so, and, what's the other one? Buildings, photovoltaics and buildings.
Lastly, not to be a dead horse, if, if, within your proposal, if you're allowed to perhaps list or cite a couple different locations that would be possible options, because there is also the top of the parking garage, there's, there's a lot of places that might be less obtrusive, I don't know if that's, if that's possible.
It is. We had local installers look at a few different city locations, so we do have some data on those other sites, but, so, so we have some of that.
Sure.
And, does anyone have any miscellaneous for the environment committee? All right, I start, I apologize for monopolizing so much time, but I appreciate your attention.
On the planning and development, Chair Chris Paul.
Thank you. This will be relatively quickly, I hope.
Yep, we've heard that before.
First, I would like to ask Athens Conservancy Representatives Sally Zaya and Phil Cantino to come up and discuss with council a request for city, for access across city lands, so that they could potentially purchase a piece of property through the Clean Ohio Grant. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, we have a map of what it is that we're asking for, because I couldn't really describe it in any way that you would ever understand without a map. But, yeah, the Conservancy would like to apply to buy something that is currently owned by Marcus I. and Sefesa, and the land is land-locked, as it currently stands, so we would need access. Now.
The land purchased would be designated a nature preserve, which will be open to the public for hiking and other non-motorized trail use, and the property to be, to be purchased has no road access. It is, it is on the eastern boundary of, I'm sorry, the eastern boundary of the property is the City of Athens Preserve, a preserve already that the City of Athens owns. So, the map you've got, what we want is that little yellow line, like here, that's the access we want. And it's basically trail access, you know, we have no vision of ever needing a vehicle in there unless it's for a medical emergency, to get somebody off of the trail, but, I mean, those things happen, but, you know, we're not asking for a road, we're asking for a trail. And, and then, as far as I'm concerned, this would really guarantee that the, what is already the city preserve would have more preserved land next to it. So, it would make it a more valuable preserve.
Size of that tract, do you know?
A little over 70 acres.
I'm sorry, seven, zero?
Seven, zero.
Sally, are you asking for, you're asking for a right-of-way?
A right-of-way, yes.
A right-of-way, so it's a, it's a, basically asking for a license for a right-of-way.
An easement to me?
From the city.
Permanent easement?
A ride, a permit, a right-of-way easement from the city. So, it's not actually purchasing or borrowing, so, that's perfectly clear.
Right.
And they are, Clean Ohio would like a letter from council? Is that what, and you've given me a copy of a letter that?
I have given you a copy of a letter, and I have not cleared it that that's going to be adequate, but that is what I think we, we need to say.
Right, and usually, Clean Ohio, if there's a problem, they usually let us know. When is the grant deadline?
September 30th.
September 30th, before September 21st. So, I would, I would probably bring this up next Monday as a resolution, or a, an ordinance that would be.
It's going, it would need to be an ordinance, since it is a right-of-way easement, so.
I'm sorry, it's so late, this whole thing is.
This is not a bad thing you're asking for.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments for Sally or Phil?
So, we have some definition of what the easement would look like. Do you have any type of survey or wording on it?
That's going to make my voice.
Besides the yellow line.
Just that, that's the letter that we're looking for.
I'm talking about if we grant an easement, which is what they'll require.
Legal description.
An legal description of some sort, saying if it's a, why, the easement from here to here.
Okay, we don't have that.
We probably need to work that one out.
Do you have any? Well, maybe when, has the easement been done for the property, for the, the grant? I don't remember where that is.
The other, the other easement grant?
No, that's, is not done either. Okay. Maybe we can just look at that at the same time when the, when that one is done. So, we'll need a legal description by you.
I'm not hearing that now.
Is that, what requirement for a right-of-way?
We've had a little.
I'm sorry, there's some confusion up here as to what we need to have by the 30th. You mentioned, are we just looking for a letter from council, or do you need to actually have the easement, you know, recorded by September 30th, or?
No, 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 we don't, no, because the easement is, would not be recorded unless we actually get the grant.
Okay, I'm sorry, the president of council and I were.
We thought we were going to need a legal description of what the easement was going to be, and if we don't need that.
A resolution.
A resolution will probably do.
Because we will not know until.
Three reading resolution, but still, bear with us just a moment, we're trying now to think if it's going to be a three reading resolution or not.
I would just introduce this resolution, you say, go ahead and suspend that.
Suspend it.
Okay, so we will do that Monday.
Do we anticipate any objections from council? Because I anticipate we would need to suspend on a three reading resolution. Okay.
Okay, and we will get it to you once we do the resolution, we will have a signed, certified copy sent to you. Thank you.
The second item on my agenda is, I would like to announce a public hearing about a change to the zoning code. This has been in the works for quite a while. The public hearing is 7:00 PM, Monday, October 19th. This is considering a recommendation from the Planning Commission to amend the zoning code, and this has been discussed before in council and in Planning Commission. And what happened was that it came forward from the Planning Commission with an acceptance, with a recommendation to pass, and there was seen a clerical error of a missing comma in the definition, and it was supposed to read "general business zone 23.0407," parentheses, three, B3's, "general business zone," it was changed to "eating and drinking establishments, drive-in, comma, drive-through, comma, eating and drinking places, provided the principal building shall be at least 200 meter, 200 feet from any R1 or R2." The comma was left out, and there was a discussion whether it was
The comma was left out and there was a discussion whether it was clerical error or whether it wasn't a clerical error, and we decided to err on the side of caution and transparency to have a public hearing because many people may have read it differently, such as businesses. So, we will have a public hearing and it will be reintroduced into council to accept the recommendations from city, from the Planning Commission. So. Third item, liquor permits. The city has received two liquor permits in the Ward Four area. Well, one's actually Ward Three. One of them has had to let people know so that they can comment on it to city council or to the mayor's office. One of them is for the Village Bakery, has applied for a permit. Right now, they do sell beer, they want to be able to serve it. And another one has been put in by the CVS Pharmacy on East State Street to sell alcohol, to sell beer or wine in the building. But one of the problems is that the police has identified as a problem, they also want to sell it through their drive-up window of the pharmacy. That, the police has IDed that as a potential problem. I agree that it's a potential problem with kind of a mixture of uses with getting your pharmacy drugs and then getting your alcohol. And they just identified it as something that they, one stop shop. So, I would like to bring that forward for people to comment on. Please write to council, comment to council regarding your feelings about that on those two liquor permits. The next item on the list is sustainability issues, and I would like to turn that over to Kent Butler.
Thank you, Member Paul. Council has a handout that I passed through and I would like to make sure that we get a copy to the mayor and the city.
Do you have a handout?
We do have a handout. I think, Alahu, you have the, you have a couple extra at that end? Would you be so kind?
I do have two of them here.
Thank you.
Just one of them. Save this for?
Paul, maybe Paul wants one.
It's all right, we'll share. We got it.
It's good that you can play it nice. So, tonight, I briefly wanted to discuss some possible changes to and amending vegetable gardening in the Athens City Code. This discussion originally stemmed from our town hall meetings and some of the members that were present at town hall meeting then continued with the ideas and did a little more research and discussion, including Rhonda Clark, who's present tonight from CFI, Michael Lockman, who's Athens, Long-Term Athens resident, born and raised, Nancy Pierce, who's also been a member of the community for a long time and lives just outside of town, Sarah Conley, who works at the farmer's market, and Michelle Jamian. These are some of the individuals that were involved with some of this input and ideas regarding looking at how to, I guess, how to streamline some of the language in our code. Having said that, Paul Ogue, the city planner, myself and Nancy Bain also met with Rhonda and Nancy Pierce to look at this again more, more closely. So, the suggestion here is to amend 24.04.01, R1 residential zone, as follows, C, which is conditionally permitted uses. The following use shall be permitted only if expressly authorized by the Board of Zoning Appeals here and after we refer to SBZA in accordance with provisions of this code. And here we have a strikeout, which is the word gardening and then the raising of vegetables, fruits, or flowers. So, you would keep domestic animals in the keeping of domestic animals, not per sale on the property. Essentially, then, this is the whole gist of this, is that this would allow gardening to be considered an implied permitted accessory use in all residential code sections and anywhere ground floor residency is permitted in a business zone. And then, for the sake of consistency across code sections in 9.10.02, to amend this regarding noxious weeds and grasses that need to be cut. So, here again, we'd have another strikeout. And this would be the simplification of code and just making things easier to read to also aid in a strikeout of the grass or other types of vegetation other than trees or shrubs, essentially acknowledging that there still is a need to look at grass and maintenance of our yards, but to make it more friendly to the use of gardening and plants that are flowers and such. Does that clarification help? Questions, comments from council and then the mayor? Any questions or comments from council?
I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Has Pat looked at this language to make sure that it really does cover? My concern, and people have brought up concerns to me about making sure that rentals and such in neighborhoods are not going to be able to go around this. So, I just want to make sure that it's reviewed. The R2 zone and the R, a separate entity.
Sure. I guess Pat's looking at it briefly now or maybe he needs a little bit more time to look at it?
Yeah, this is the first time I've been presented with this. If there are any specific concerns as far as changes to the rentals, I don't see on this page why that would be the case, but if there are specific concerns, certainly go ahead and shoot me an email, let me know exactly what those concerns are so I can take a look at it.
We would be asking the Planning Commission to look at this too. I mean, that's all we're proposing at this point.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
To make gardening not a conditionally permitted use in zoning, just doesn't seem like it's?
I'm not seeing any reason here why there should be any concerns about that.
Okay.
It sounded like we can't have flowers in our front yard anyway.
Right.
From the way the present law reads.
It doesn't seem like it's a, so we'll put forward a resolution to that effect unless there's a, to the Planning Commission, asking them to look at it.
Mayor, do you have a comment or input?
It does have to go to the Planning Commission because it is Title 23, not 24 on the top. The other thing, if we're going to vary a change to noxious weed part of the ordinance, it'd be nice to change the penalty and the structure of how that goes rather than have to go as a citation that just has to be prosecuted as a ticket very similar to litter. Right now, as it stands, the process to get grass cut that's over size of weeds, noxious weed, essentially a citation has to be written or we go through the process of actually informing somebody and then spending money cutting the weeds down ourselves and charging them.
All right, thank you.
That would just be another method. As for the nature of the noxious weed, I don't see any problem with that, that section's in there. I'll have to go back and look at the 23 section. It doesn't, it doesn't read the way I thought it read.
But I'll go from there. We'll go from there with the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And I might add too, for council's peace of mind, along with the mayor's office, that in some of the research that Ms. Pierce did, she was in contact with some communities across the US that have already changed their codes to make them more friendly for gardening and yards. And that included cities, such as Madison, Wisconsin, Sacramento, California, Bloomington, Indiana. And in her follow-up calls, people she spoke with in Madison and their city department have acknowledged that they're not having any problems with it, that doing fine and have community support. And same thing in Sacramento, essentially, they just had a strikeout in their code to make it read easier and more clean and clearly, I mean, rather. So, I think again, this kind of goes along with efforts to be self-sufficient and/or sustainable for the homeowner and/or people living in town to make it easier to have a garden and then also aids the code department in some of their job and ability to free them up to focus on other responsibilities. Remember, guys?
Thank you. I just want to say thanks for working on this. It would be good to get that cleaned up. I have some zucchini growing in my yard and I was wondering if I was going to get a knock on my door this summer. In terms of the second part, the noxious weeds and that section, I had a conversation with the Shade Tree Commission on that and they would be willing to help establish, you know, what is a noxious weed, what's not. Not in health, but pointing to state guidelines, state definitions. So, they'd be happy to, to work with you on that if it seems like that could be an issue.
Okay. Thank you. I believe also Dr. Cantino, who just was here, left not too long ago, had some gracious efforts to aid in that process as well, if needed, for a clearer definition.
That one I do know has become very sticky in the past and that's why it is not. Howard Stevens, sitting in that very chair, took that on a long time ago and the reason that it is not defined by the list of weeds is it's kind of a tar baby that can be very, very difficult to get unstuck in once you get going. But maybe there's clearer ways to do it now than what we had before, so. Thank you. If you wish to take it on, go for it.
We may want to, to say noxious weeds and invasives or something, so, because there are clear guidelines about certain types of invasive. There are certain states have, it's illegal to sell certain types of plants and they determine that's alien invasive. So, you may want to look at that too. That might depar it. No, it just gets worse. Some of them are easy, but you have to ID them. I mean, that's the problem. And you have to enforce it too, that's another, you know, come on.
I saw the most beautiful ironweed in a perennial garden this past week in Maine that I think I've ever seen, but I'm sure a lot of my neighbors would consider it a noxious weed. And Queen Anne's Lace is a beautiful plant and is a noxious weed and is invasive and, you know, when used properly, I don't know how, how you legislate it.
Okay. Yeah, and as Mervane acknowledged too, I think simplicity is the key here in looking at striking out information to make this read more clearly and easily. And thank you, I want to say thank you to council for your help in this as well as members in the community that were largely invested and involved in giving input pertaining to this. I do believe there was one or two comments from the community and then we can move on. Any members in the community that had anything to add or share? Thanks, Greg.
Greg Barodhurst, Granville Avenue. I just wanted to add that Chris Paul's comment about definitions in regards to weeds, which is, you know, basically a plant out of place where somebody doesn't like it, doesn't have a very good standing in court. So, if we do, when we modify this ordinance, maybe if there's a little more input with the help of the standard guidelines from AFIS, from ODNR, and other agencies and looking across the country and trends, which what was cool before is not cool now, we won't make that, we won't have to make that choice. We can just look at what's accepted in the professional community as being truly noxious, not just because somebody doesn't like it, but it could be, that's a relative term. And also, what is actually an invasive is accepted, is described as invasive through United States Department of Agriculture and ODNR research and guidelines that are presently out there and available to you. So, I just wanted to bring that up and support what Chris was saying and I would also be available to, as a resource to help direct you to those sources. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg. Any other comments or input?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Greg. Thank you, that's all I have.
Under miscellaneous, I've gotten a note that on the liquor permits, somebody would like to request a hearing, which is council's right to request a hearing about liquor permits, and I would like to get a sense of council on whether council would like to request a hearing permit, a hearing on the permits for either the CVS liquor permit or the Village Bakery. Can I have, like, how do people feel and?
I would point out, I think the deadline on it is the 17th.
Yes.
So, it's coming up quick.
Right.
So, I think, I get the feeling that people are more comfortable with the Village Bakery
permit as opposed to the CVS permit. I would probably more, be more inclined to have a hearing for the CVS permit because the police has indicated that they do have problems with that one. Is that a general sense of council?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the end of the environmental committee, or planning and development committee?
It's all over. It's over.
Finance and personnel. Finance and personnel, soon, very soon, we're going to be talking about the budget for 2010. And I asked the auditor Cathy Heck to talk to us about her projections, which we received during our break, and I'm not sure how many people have gotten familiar with them. So, we're just going to have a short finance and personnel committee tonight because I know we're going to have longer ones in the future. So, auditor Heck, I think you got, everybody should have gotten copies of?
The two long ones and one short one, one for me. I don't think you're doing, you'll have to share and then I'll give you mine. You'll have to share. I'm sorry. As Member Sands said, he asked me to address you regarding projections, concerns, and maybe plans about the budget. October is when we usually start the intense weekly budget process. So, I'll have a more detailed report in October. And as we were just discussing, I handed out two unappropriated balance sheets. One was for August of 2008 and one is August of 2009, which I know I already gave everyone, but I didn't know that you would bring them tonight. What I want to point out is the comparison between the unappropriated balance at this point last year compared to this year, it's almost $200,000 difference, decrease for this year. Most of the other funds are generally doing okay, spending below their budget. The general fund balance is what I'm, we're more concerned about and we want everybody to look at. The budget has been higher this year and so I also handed out another, a historical listing prepared by Ray Hazlitt. The middle column that says unencumbered balance for each year is what the carryover was for the next year, for each of those years. And you'll see that we had some dips in 2002, three, and four, brought it back up, and now we've come, come way back down. Obviously, the 27th pay this year didn't help in the general fund and so, but what I also want to reiterate, and I know we've talked about some of this stuff before and I'll try to talk a little faster, but the carryover is the money left from the one year to the next that we use to start the new year. The general fund, for example, needs $350,000 to make the first payroll in January. The projected revenue and carryover determine the budget. As you know, we're not allowed to spend money we don't have by law. However, the carryover is what's actually in the bank for the bills on January 1st. So, you know, somebody's making $50,000 a year, they can't pay their mortgage for the year on January 1st because they don't really have all that money. They know they're getting it, but they don't have it in the bank, which is what our issue will be. Projections for next year, I think they look to be fairly flat. We've gotten the real estate increases this year, so only new development will increase that for next year. Every year, there really is an increase in revenue, but I don't, there's just nothing on the horizon that looks like it's going to be substantial at all, especially in the general fund, which relies mostly on income tax receipts. We've anticipated and certified as much as we can this year. There won't be any changes to increase the revenue as of this year unless we get an unexpected windfall, but I wouldn't count on that. If we have a little carryover using this year's budget for next year, we won't have enough money. The budget, of course, increased this year as they usually do from year to year. I've recently, as Member Sands said, we discussed this over the break with the administration and the finance committee and discussed, you know, options for plans for this year. At this point, we're taking a very close look at the budgets and trying to keep expenditures down through the rest of the year. And, you know, I guess the main thing I want council to keep in mind is that personnel is the major cost to the general fund and most funds. On the smaller sheet, you'll see at the bottom, 78% of the general fund is for personnel costs.
79%.
78%.
78%.
Just horizontal.
Just horizontal sheet.
The horizontal sheet, this is the personnel cost. Anyway, about eighty, eighty percent of any budget is personnel cost, usually 70 to 80, and it's eighty percent in the general fund. This year, out of an $11,900,000 budget, the payroll was $9,495,000. So when it comes to things like, you know, new vehicles, repairs, additional expenses, that's not very much money to tide you over for a whole year. And as you know, it's up to council to approve the budget, make changes in things such as the tax mix or staffing ordinance if necessary. And I think that Nancy and Jim just want all of council to be aware that those might be some things that you'd be looking at to keep our budget in line for next year. Anybody have any questions?
You mentioned a tax mix as an idea.
The income tax revenue has a mix. Seventy-four percent goes into the general fund right now and.
Nineteen for the streets.
Streets, 2% for cap. There is some taken off the top that is voted for the community center, recreation and Easton.
Eastlake.
Eastlake.
Dead fruit.
Dead, yeah. So, so that those voted amounts, which are about 12, 13%, are taken off the top. The rest of it, council can change.
And we have in the past.
Yes.
In the past, I think the one point capital was at 9% and I think it's a max from what I've looked historically. The general fund was at 76 or 78, somewhere in there. So there has been fluxes within each one. If I remember, you're saying each point, percentage points about 80,000 or so. So if you could say, let's, we need to add something to general fund, you say 1% would be about 80,000. It may or may not cover what you want. You take it out of streets, that means 80,000 less out of streets. And again, capital's not a big robust dollar amount there. I think traditionally, we've been throwing the estate tax into capital, I believe.
I don't think we ever changed that.
Okay.
It's still in the general fund.
Okay, maybe we should look at that. Again, this is all for, you know, future discussion for the end of the year budget for us to get together. I believe, I know Nancy and Jim will discuss the idea of having other council members more involved in the process. So if you have questions, feel free to ask Kathy or them.
Tross, tross. Tross, tross.
No, everybody should be involved. You all have expertise in places where money is spent, whether it's in, you know, the fire station that we're playing with or, you know, recreation as well.
And again, this is just, I envisioned this just as an introduction to the budgetary process. It's going to be a tight, much tighter process this year than it has been in the past to any of us, except maybe Mervane.
I should add one or two more things is we're looking at this $123,000 unappropriated balance right now. Typically, every year, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars that is unspent, that's budgeted. You know, there are what, about 11 different departments in the general fund and so if they don't spend all of their payroll money, supplies, electric, anything that they have left over, then it's automatically unappropriated at the end of the year. So I do expect that to go up some. And I will say that, as I said about the other funds, that even in the general fund, our fund balance is pretty good right now and it looks like people are being careful with their budgets and that we will have, I'd say more like three or four thousand, $100,000 left unappropriated. However, you know, half a million is really not enough bare bones to start the year for the general fund. Sounds like a lot of money, but the million dollar carryovers that you see on most, for most of these years is what we really aim for.
So I, really, that's all I have for tonight, finance and personnel, unless member Vane had something.
I'm sorry, I had one other item from Andy Stone for Public Works. There will be an appropriation for the stimulus packet for the Curtis Mulligan that will be coming forward, an appropriation ordinance, depending upon what the auditor determines at the time, whether it's just for the grant or portion versus the loan.
We have to have the number to put in.
Right.
And that's what we're waiting for. We're waiting to better.
It has to all be appropriated, even though it's, we won't actually have our hands on the money, but we will be awarded this large amount of money by the federal government and our auditors look at that and we just have to account for it in our budget.
Sure. And when do we expect that?
Wednesday.
This week?
The number should come on Wednesday, they said.
Okay. Okay, whenever.
That's what Andy said last.
I don't know if this is even much of an issue, but I know we talked months ago about if the city has a vacant position, that council would be informed if it's going to be filled. I'm wondering if that's still in place or if the mayor, if you have any comments on filling vacancies within the city over the next six months.
We, I can report that we just hired a new communications officer and she's in place and started her training. Came from the State Highway Patrol, so we're feeling pretty confident about that. We will be discussing, we've just done it in finance and personnel committee, meaning the possibility of replacing one police officer. The part-time positions continue to be filled in departments where as needed, for example, the daycare that we run through the community center that has licensed staff, you have to have certain numbers. So I haven't brought those to you. Anything else?
No.
But I hear the, I hear the reminder. I got the message.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? Member Vane, did you have anything else to add? That's it for finance and personnel right now.
Transportation.
Following committee committee.
Starting transportation.
Yeah.
It's going to go fast.
Okay.
Are you just throwing it all at me?
Yeah.
Key drive bids. Is this the right, I don't know if I have the right order, but I'm going for it. Ordered to Shelley and Sands and we've had a pre-construction meeting and they'll be doing that work, conducting that here in probably about two weeks to start. Harold Avenue improvements. The low bidder appears to be Tom Mail and Sons, about $550, if anybody's ever driven by there. And we'll be having a pre-construction meeting on that this week. And as you know, Carpenter Street is done and it's my understanding, kudos, keep coming in on that.
Just got some legislation in place in that place.
Harold Avenue is the telephone pole?
Yes. Get it out of the middle of the street.
Exactly, by Larry's Doghouse. Yes, exactly. And State Electric. Okay, thank you.
That's partially funded by a CVG grant.
Thank you for clarifying that. I believe we visited and toured on our street tour.
Yes. Long time coming. This information item on the draft survey is regarding, it's on monkeysurvey.com.
Survey Monkey.
Survey Monkey?
Yes.
Excuse me. And it's regarding that pilot project about the possibility of having streets identified with a tag per household. And so, I'm sorry, I don't know much more than that at this time. Nancy, good.
I'd like you to put on that survey, is there off-street parking in front of your house? Is it on one side or both sides or no? Because it's certainly, in many areas, this is not really even a pertinent.
It's my understanding is fairly limited on Survey Monkey.
Any questions?
But I can ask.
But the number, number five is.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't either.
You got a draft survey right there?
Yeah, we all have draft surveys right here.
I don't have a draft survey. Do you have a draft survey? Okay. That's nice.
Why, is it a secret? Were we supposed to have it?
Oh, just flaunting us for this, huh?
Okay.
Taxi appeals. That was vetted through the taxi board and I'm looking for Debbie Walker. But we had, as it stands now, if that board issues negative response to anyone in hearing, their only recourse is to appeal back to the same board. So what we'd like to do is have it come to council where you can establish your own hearing board. It's kind of ridiculous to tell someone no and then turn around and they have to ask you again, so.
What's, I'm not, what's this, what's this pertaining?
Taxi board. We have a taxi board.
And they're appealing.
If there were to be an appeal, right now, as it's written, they appeal back to the board, which.
Well theoretically, wouldn't they remedy the problem they have? I mean, if they don't have the right number of drivers or they have people that have felonies that are driving, wouldn't that be the remedy? And then they come back? I mean, if they're boneheaded enough to come back with the same application, then they deserve what they get.
Well, this was the recommendation that the taxi board came with to.
Because they didn't want to hear it again, right?
I just don't, it doesn't seem to afford the appellant very much of relief.
Well, they can either amend their application and follow the rules or not, can't they?
Well, if it's not council's desire.
I mean, could we be doing it at 9:30 at night and do a rational job? We'd have no basis for comparison.
No, we do these at like 1:00 in the afternoon.
It'll be as good as the vending board of appeals. Everybody will want it.
So if that is not your wish, we will keep it as is.
Well, I mean, if you're turning someone down for cause, then they can either accept the turn down or remedy their problem. I mean, so it's not like you can change the law or give them a deal just because they're asking again. I mean, isn't that just what you're doing?
That's very true. If they come back at us with the exact same issue and it's already been declined, that will be the response again, so. So noted. May I move on?
Maybe.
Well, let's lead it up some more.
The AUVa, along with the Chamber of Commerce, requests holiday parking in municipal garage, maybe coming for it as an ordinance where as opposed to bagging the street, the Uptown Business Association is now requesting use of the parking garage, which I actually like.
Instead of streets?
So that then, you know, leave the two-hour parking and the free parking and this is during the holiday season that we have. Along with that, and it's not listed here, but Athens Uptown Business Association does indeed want to have their uptown trick-or-treat on Monday, October 26th. We're going to tweak the times a little to have it start a little later, not too late, and also ask for the free parking in the garage. It was over 400 children, I think, tromping up and down in their little costumes last year, so they'd like to continue to ask. Their sidewalk repair citation versus assessment, it's my understanding that there may be a review still being conducted. I don't know if it's reached the law director's office yet, so.
There had been one question that the chair of the committee had posed to me and in the interest of time, the answer to that question is no.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
No, it was, just to elaborate very briefly, the issue was whether under the current system of sidewalk.
Can they appeal to the public?
There are basically two ways, I swear, I'll be very quick. There are basically two ways under the current code that, and I've outlined this in previous meetings before, that we can address, you know, the concern is that we can, how can we get people to fix faulty sidewalks? We basically have two options under our code. We can either fine them $50, a minor misdemeanor for failure to maintain the sidewalk, or we can go through the special assessments program, process that's outlined in the revised code. Those are really, under the current code, those are the only two options. So I know there have been some sort of, some pretty creative ideas about can we kind of just fine people until we raise enough money to then go and fix the sidewalk, stuff like that? And the answer to that is no, because that's basically a, kind of, it's kind of a backdoor way of doing a special assessment. And when it comes to assessments, we're, I've already gone on too long. I'm sorry. Or we're basically bound by the procedure that's in the revised code, which is kind of cumbersome and unwieldy, but that's.
But it's the law.
That's the state law we got.
Thank you. So we won't be seeing that one again. There is some discussion about some changing of travel routes, just making you aware, in the city, particularly around Kern and Stipson. This is for ADA issue for the employees of Personnel Plus and we're still looking that internally with police and fire. Safe routes to school, the grant award appropriation of 100%, it's 100% reimbursement. We will need appropriation ordinance for $120,000, of which we'll get reimbursed. Salt truck, we need an additional $6,500 for the salt truck. The price quoted, I guess, was from 2007 prices. I don't know how this slipped by, but we'll be asking for an amendment to that ordinance for an additional $6,500.
How much more?
6,500.
6,500?
And we'll ask for an amendment on the disposition of vehicles ordinance 07209. What happened was we had added a car to dispose, for disposal, at the same time we had another car in the fleet come in for repair and the mechanic said, hey, this one that we were going to dispose is in much better shape than this one you want us to repair, so we'd like to trade that off. And I think that's all I have.
But that's the car that's parked in the garage and used only occasionally and instead of having a single car for use by City Hall, we have multiple, right?
We have two cars used by City Hall.
That's multiple.
Yes, it is. And we have, we have basically five people using the one car, the Chevy and Paddle that's downstairs, okay? Then we have the other car that sits there, using lots of gas, sitting there all the time, just sits there. We turn it on long periods of time.
For a place.
For a place.
It's a place. It's holding a place. And then there's also the other thing that's used by the channels.
As soon as we get the parking garage full entirely, then we'll find another.
That'll probably happen. Let's go back to that other transportation committee. I can tell I'm not going to get anywhere with that one. I was wondering if we could have some kind of a, of a understanding of how many places do you think will be taken by this AUVa request, please? And before we have, something coming out of, an ordinance read about changing something that's been on the books for 20 years, the parking, you know, the bagging, the parking on the streets. Could we actually see what the trade-offs will be with respect to spaces?
I think we looked at it a year ago. I'll have to ask the captain pile again for that.
Yeah, and so, and that means, and what about personnel questions with respect to this in terms of using our attendance and so on? I mean, you know, so rather than just saying, well, there'll be an ordinance coming out, I'd like to have some more discussion because we did have, I mean, it may.
We have some time.
Yeah, we certainly do.
It's not till November, so.
Okay, I do have one miscellaneous in terms of transportation. One of our buses, the 2004, bus number 5462, this is a 2004 bus. It's got 150,000 miles on it and has a broken engine. We're going to send up Andy Stone's, we're going to send our city mechanic to look at it. It's been sent up to Columbus to evaluate it, whether to fix it or retain it. I'd rather get it fixed at this point. I'll get a price on it as soon as possible for appropriation on that, or just to let you know that needs to be done. We're estimating maybe 12 to 19,000, depending on whether we fix the engine or replace the engine. This is not the oldest bus, which is why I want to get it fixed. The older buses are 2001s and 2002s, I think, with a lot more miles on it. So I'm trying to get that. We will be getting stimulus cuts at the end of the year, but it'll still leave us pretty short on buses.
I had another miscellaneous that if you completed or.
Your committee, isn't it?
Question is hoping maybe you might be able to remind us that there was, I think, a bicycle pedestrian, upcoming pedestrian meeting slash public forum? Is that correct?
Yes, that is going to be the 17th of, this Thursday. It's going to be up here at 7 o'clock. I think I wrote it down.
Thank you for helping me confirm this. What time?
I believe it's 7:00.
7:00 PM?
It should be on the city website.
Okay. So for our viewers, please see the city website and for those access on the internet as well or watching us streaming online, if you're curious and interested participating, it is a discussion and forum.
I believe we'll have our, we have a consultant looking at bike pedestrian plans. He will be here and probably give us some results of the original, some of the first preliminary surveys and probably an update of where we want to go next.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for that update. I hope to be there.
That's it for that? Now miscellaneous, you just took care of all the miscellaneous.
Yes. So recreation committee.
President?
Just real brief. Thank you. Just briefly on recreation committee, I know last week, you were talking about some concerns pertaining to landscaping on some of the city sites such as Arts West. And interestingly enough, when I attended the AMAC Athens Municipal Arts Commission meeting, which is a committee that advises and offers support pertaining to the arts for council members and the mayor, they had, originally, they had a subcommittee or group that was offering insight and met and as well listed some suggestions pertaining to what to do on that south side. So we could revisit perhaps their old committee notes and suggestions and take a look at that since that's what that group is supposed to do, is advise us as a, as a group. So I just wanted to briefly mention that, that there is some information, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, there's some ideas about what to do on that south side with the, because it is very difficult to landscape and it's the. with the, because it is very difficult to landscape, and it's difficult to, it's too steep to use a lawnmower or to cut the grass safely up there, and they have some ideas and suggestions, so I'll try to bring that information forward. And Nancy, is there something else to, you had mentioned last week about this? You don't recall? Okay.
I'm still on the chat.
So, yeah, anyone else has any other input on that?
Kathy.
Well, thank you.
We are adjourned.